Whether they believe it or not, I've always got the teachers backs. You know, that doesn't mean I can always just give them everything that they want. That's not the way it works, but at least they can know that there's somebody in their corner who understands them and represents them, even if it's, I'm technically, I'm actually, you know, officially representing the board.
Welcome everybody back to another exciting episode of the Undisrupted Podcast. Adam, it is the midst of summer. Well, in Georgia, you guys are done with summer. School starts like tomorrow, but as we all have had the road trips, the summer plans, the, all the things, vacations, it brings me to my opening debate, which is which is better? The road trip experience or the all inclusive resort experience? Hard hitting debate today. So Adam, where do you lie? Where do you fall on this? Cause I have a feeling I know.
Well, I, I've been in the car. I think the max I've been in the car with my three offspring is about nine hours and that was probably about eight hours and 59 minutes too long. So I'm leaning with the all inclusive resort there because here's the thing with the all inclusive resort. They're have a dedicated space where you could dump your kids off, where you can say, hey, kids, go to this play area. Mom and dad will be back later. And you know what we did? We dropped our kids off. Here's the scandalous part. We sat around and did nothing. It was just, it was just several hours of no mommy, no daddy. It was just, hey, you want to do something? No, let's just sit down. She read a book and I actually like this looked at the ceiling for about two hours. Just, just I enjoyed my vacation. Love my kids. Don't get me wrong. Love my kids. But the great thing about all inclusive resort, you do have the opportunity to pass them off on somebody else. What say you, Hooker?
I, of course, I've always been a big road trip fan. I was a road tripper when I was a kid. Every year we would take a summer road trip to Montana where my dad's from. And so no matter where we lived in the United States, and we lived everywhere in the United States, we would drive cross country to get to Montana, whether it would be usually within two days. So it was always like 12 to 14 hour day trips. And this is back pre any type of devices. So I had a lot of Archie, Archie comic books. I had a lot of word finds, played a lot of road trip games, but I always have that in my heart. But I will say, I agree with you. It is not a vacation. It is a trip when you take your kids with you because a vacation would imply you're able to relax. Um, so I, we just got off of a cruise, which is more like an all inclusive resort. That's, you know, the kids are able to run around, do their own thing. We were able to run around, do our own thing and we kind of would meet up for dinner. But I don't know, there's something to the pain of road tripping. My record is 21 days that we did in 2021, 6,537 miles. So that's 6,000 mile road trip over 21 days, I think was probably honestly about eight or nine days too long. I think 12 is 12 or 13 is a sweet spot, especially when they become teenagers. Which is why I'm going to also invite our next guest in who's, who's not an expert in any of the stuff that I know of, but he's an expert at great many things. Steve Dembo is a tech guru extraordinaire. He's a former teacher, a former administrator, now a teacher, now an administrator. He's a board member. Uh, he worked for a tech company. He's dresses up in the 501st Legion and is a stormtrooper sometimes on the weekends. Uh, Steve, what say you on this debate? Welcome to the podcast, first of all. Yeah.
Why? Thank you. Thank you for having me today. Um, my personal, I love road trips. I love like, yo, the way it's the journey more so than the destination. So if it were just me and my wife, I would be thrilled to just do the road trips. But I think you see where this is going. Then you throw in the two kids, one of which is full on teenager. And like, you know, when, when they're in the backseat and they're on the iPad and the iPhone, they're not even looking up, they're not even looking out the window. The, 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 the kitschy stopovers are more of an inconvenience to them than anything else. At that point, give me the all inclusive, pawn them off on somebody else like Adam, and let me just enjoy a beach and a cocktail.
There you go. There we go. So I, I like, I like the way you think. I like the way you think. You see Carl, you have those fun memories. I remember stopping at the rest stop because growing up, I was one of the pores. So when we grew up, we didn't stop at the McDonald's or the Burger King. It was baloney sandwiches in the cooler with the quarter waters. And we would stop at the rest stops and have our baloney sandwiches. And I would see the McDonald's drive passing by. And the only time we stopped at a McDonald's is to go to the restroom.
You had baloney. We didn't even have that. My dad, seriously, he would take two pieces of bread with mustard. And he said, make yourself a mustard sandwich on the dashboard of the wooden station wagon. As we drove cross country, cause we ain't stopping. And if you have to go pee, there's a jug right over there. Yeah, sorry. A little too much TMI there for our audience members. So we turned this, we've taken this right off the rails to start folks. That's good. But we know Steve fairly well. We've gone back, God Steve, I don't know, a decade now or more. I mean, the iPad Palooza days before all that even, yeah, early Isti, I think neck even before it was Isti.
Neck TCA, yeah, way back.
Yep. I actually had a chance when I was talking with Steve this summer, um, chance to tell him, before we became friends, I actually was a fan of some of his work. I actually was, uh, reliving some of his quotes from one of his presentations that he gave. So, you know, that's one thing I love about this space with technology directors and, and folks in this space. You, you get a chance to become friends with some of the people that you idolize at times. So, you know, it's really amazing. Now with that being said, since you are, uh, I see the look you're, you give me a look there. With all the roles that you've been throughout your life, you're almost like, you know, uh, quantum leap, you know, you keep leaping into different roles until you find the one that you want to stay in. Currently you do serve as a board member for a school district. So you've been on different sides. How is it on that side? Cause I know how it is for me currently as a tech director, talking to my board. And I have a great board, but it's still the board stuff that you have to deal with. So can you kind of just give us some insight on how it is it? Cause you still in your role have to work with another board. So you are a board member and you listen to a technology director, but then you also are on the other side where you are a technology person, director, working with the board. That, that's blows my mind here, sir.
Yeah, it gets very meta at times, you know, uh, literally there have been times where back to back, I'm the one being presented to, and the next day I'm doing the board presentation, you know, almost the exact same thing. Yeah. So for me, being on the board, especially as an educator, A, it sort of allows me to bring that perspective to the board conversations. But I've also made a point to be the one to serve on the negotiating teams where we're doing teacher contracts and, and when we're doing insurance and so on and so forth, uh, more so, so that I can, be the one there to sort of empathize with the teachers, make sure that they know the board understands where they're coming from, what their needs are, what their perspective are, that we're not just operating from some ivory tower and, and, and so on, and not considering what their requests, their needs, uh, and so on are. You know, it does mean that I get a lot of arrows shot my way at times, but I'd rather them be shot at someone who really does, I mean, who, whether, whether they believe it or not, I've always got the teachers backs. You know, that doesn't mean I can always just give them everything that they want. That's not the way it works, but at least they can know that there's somebody in their corner who understands them and represents them, even if it's, I'm technically, I'm, I'm actually, you know, officially representing the board.
Right. Your community, right? At that point, but you're also an advocate then for your staff. And what's, what's your, the big thing I've always run into with boards is this, uh, the kind of the differences between boards that feel like there's governance, which is really kind of a board's duty versus micromanagement. So do you find, are you feeling any of that now on the other side? Do you feel like there's a tendency for some board members back? And I don't want you to call them out either because you do work with them. So volunteer with them, I should say. What's, what, what say you on that? Have you experienced that in your past with maybe the micromanagement more than the governance? Or have you always had a pretty good board?
We, we've always had a pretty high functioning board and, you know, there's always those times where it crosses over. Heck, I can honestly say that there's been a few times where I've crossed over. But you know, then there's a lot of little checks and balances and there's a lot of little conversations about, you know, where the lines get drawn and, you know, yes, you want to make your voice heard, but you also can't make it, you can't imply that your voice is a command. You know what I mean? Or that you speak on behalf of the board. So, you know, that's something that we constantly work on, uh, and we put a lot of structures in place to make sure that we sort of keep that stuff in check. Um, you're right. It's a big, big challenge and we see that go awry so many times in so many neighboring districts. You know, and a lot of times it's for the best of intentions. It's people don't even realize it. But when you get a parent, uh, asking their, their, their coach, why their kid isn't playing enough or something like that, you know, it's hard to know. Is that person asking as a parent? Or is this a board member who's giving me a directive? You know, it's little things like that. So we, we do, we have a lot of conversations, a lot of reflections. We do a lot of board PD. You know, every single year we do a full like a four or five hour workshop, uh, with, uh, somebody from, um, the Illinois School Board Association and so on. So we try and keep that stuff top of mind, but it's a very real issue. You're right.
So let me ask you this, um, kind of expanding on that. So as the, a technology director, and I'm likening this to like, when you were a child and you're like, oh, my parents just don't get it. Then when you become a parent, you're like, oh, it totally makes sense to me now. So as a tech director, you know, going to a board and getting pushed back or whatever on things, you're like, ah, they don't get it. But now on the board member, you see a different side of that. So what would be some advice that you would give any tech leader listening to this? That they need to have getting ready to present, let's say their budget to the board or trying to add a new item in place. What are some words or wisdoms, something that you've learned now on that side? That would make their lives a whole lot easier?
One of the most important things to remember is that the board members are for the most part, they're average community members that just raise their hands. They don't speak the language. They don't have the breadth of experience that you do. They don't have, and it's not that they don't want to trust somebody, but when they're put in a position of leadership, they feel it's their responsibility to not just take anything, you know, uh, just at, you know, take somebody just at their word. So what I would strongly recommend is speak as much as you can in plain language and align your messaging to the stuff that they will understand and that they have faith in and the schemas that they're used to working within, which in most districts is mission, vision, strategic plan. If you can take what you're trying to do and show how it aligns to the strategic plan, you're 75% of the way there because they've already said, this is what our priority is. Here is what their marching orders are. If you're in alignment with that, all right, we're cool, you know? So that, that's the most important thing is speak the, the language that they're already accustomed to.
That's great advice and something that I didn't learn until later on. I would try to do these dazzling slides with fancy little transitions and things like that. And eventually my superintendent pulled me aside and said, hey, make it about five minutes, not 20. Go can simple concise and then be ready for each one of them to have a comment because they all want to have a comment. And then just have that information ready.
And, and remember, I mean, the, the board meeting is technically, it's a business meeting, you know? So, you know, you, I would lean more towards a, a, a simple theme and bullet points than stories and narration and so on. And which is not my, that's not my instinct either. That doesn't play to my strengths, but when I'm presenting for the board here, it's, it's cut and dry.
I would love to see the Steve Dembo ed tech poetry version of the board presentation. I think we've got your next, uh, I think we've got your next poetry slam ready. It's going to be a, it's going to be a board meeting themed, uh, just because of your unique background. So, but let's pivot a little bit because we've been talking a lot this season about kind of the teacher admin shortage that's happening nationally, people leaving the profession, many of them admittedly working for tech companies. And you, I feel like with your unique background, I got to ask you this because you've come, you, you were in the classroom, you're an administrator, then you went to a tech company, then you came back. So you've kind of been in the roles from both sides. If you, if I am a new, uh, let's say I'm an administrator or a teacher who just left and I'm working for, I'm starting with a tech company, probably this month or the next couple of months, what advice, uh, would you give? Like, because they see it like, oh, it's going to be, you're going to make more money. It's going to be great. You know, they, they usually go for the money and sometimes for the culture. Um, but, but what would you say to them, uh, going in?
A lot of teachers are used to the education style environment, which is you work at a district for a certain amount of time, you get tenure, you stay on, you know where your salary structure is. That's all out the window. Um, when you're working for a private company, uh, everything is negotiable and your, what you get is directly tied to what you negotiate as an individual. There's no union representing. So A, be very aggressive about advocating for yourself. Don't just take anything as that's the way it is. Um, I, I would definitely negotiate everything, uh, throughout. And two, you don't get married to anyone business. I mean, that it's very, very normal in the business world for people to, you know, they, they downsize and so they cut off the people who are lowest on the totem pole. And that's nothing to do with you. It's nothing personal. It's just the way it is. So just always, keep that resume up to date and always be looking out for different opportunities. Because don't, you, a lot of educators, they're internally, they're, they're wired to be as loyal. They're, they're wired to be like a dog almost, you know, as loyal as possible, you know, I mean, unconditional loyalty. And the business does not have that for you. It just doesn't. So, and it's not that, it's not that there are businesses who really do want to commit to people. It's just the nature of that world. So you could, just remember you could be cut anytime. And so you should keep that same sort of mentality that if something better does come along, don't be shy about being willing to throw your hat into another arena or going ahead and doing that interview. Even if you're satisfied with where you're at, it's nothing personal. It's just business.
That's, that's definitely a different way of thinking, uh, when you start talking about it. Because like you said before, in education, you sign that contract. It is what it is. You work your 190 days or whatever your contract says, and, and you're happy about it. But being able to bargain or even come to a company and say, hey, I know I'm working here, but this other company is talking to me. Um, you know, what do you guys want willing to do? But because I like it here, but hey, they got this offer on the table. You can't do that as a teacher. Um, you can't say, oh, you know, the district right next to me wants me really bad. They're going to give me all honors classes and.
NFL free agent, NFL free agency here. Yeah, they're offering me, that's the other thing that we, I said, besides the loyalty, the other part of teaching and being in education is a guilt associated with making money. And it's, and it's something that I still struggle with. And of course I was raised Catholic. So I have some of that guilt in me as well. But whenever somebody's like, oh, well, we can't afford to pay you for this much to be a speaker. I almost feel guilty. Like, well, you're not paying me just for that hour that I'm there. You're paying me for my, you know, 10,000 hours of service before that and the message that I'm bringing and all that. But I've had people say like, you know, you can't, you know, can't pay people more than, you know, a couple hundred dollars an hour. I mean, how are you going to pay them that first speak? But you know, you and I know that the speaking world is a totally different world. And I say, it's the difference between you sending a few people to a conference versus bringing someone like us in to, to say a shared message that everybody hears at the same time, a consistent message. So, uh, but again, the money part of that to me is, is the biggest challenge I see with teachers too. It's like, they leave for the money and then they realize like they're in a profession that you're right. It's a balance sheet. It has to be balanced. It can't, if it's not, then we're cutting you people. Sorry.
Yep. Well, and that's the other thing is, you know, we were talking about your negotiations and salaries. A lot of people are just used to just seeing the bottom line, but there's all sorts of other ways that, you know, things that can be negotiated, you know, having them pay off a cell phone contract, pay off internet at home, pay off the, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways. You're, you know, increasing the amount of, uh, uh, you know, your four contributions to 401k, covering more insurance. There's so many different ways that these things can be negotiated and nothing is set in stone. No matter how many times they tell you it's set in stone. You know, if they want to work with you, it's not set in stone.
That's a class we need to be teaching, you know, so students can learn. But so, so speaking of learning, since you are the sage, uh, we're, we're, we're learning from you in this, in this podcast episode. Actually. Looking very spaceballs this year. Um, you're someone that is a thought leader, but like, when it's time for you to fill your bucket, when it's time for you to learn, where do you turn to? And like, you know, what books are you reading? Like, who do you listen to to try to, you know, gain more knowledge for yourself?
Yeah, it's funny because I, I, I still listen to some podcasts. Uh, Ken Shelton gave me a list at one point. And that's sort of my like go to, uh, one that I've been churning through over time. But, uh, a lot of it is now articles and, uh, you know, online more, a lot of it. I've been reading a lot of traditional media and a lot of times it's not necessarily specific about education. I feel like with the blogs that I was reading on a regular basis, um, at a certain point, I started feeling it was like when you've been to one too many ed camps and you feel like, oh, I've heard this conversation before, or I've seen that slide before, you know, that kind of a thing. So a, a lot of it is, uh, you know, traditional media and trying to make connections, you know, Wired Magazine and those kinds of things. But then there are also just some people that can send me down a rabbit hole like you wouldn't believe. Uh, Wesley Frye is one of those people. Like, you know, with just a post of his, I, I feel like hi- his introspection is just absolutely brilliant. David Warlick, who doesn't do speaking anymore, but has sort of found a new voice in social media now. And he's, you know, the way that his mind works, just i- 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 it's phenomenal. And the other thing is, uh, you know, a few different communities, like, uh, a lot of the subs on Reddit. Uh, a lot of the stuff on Reddit, I, I've found to be kind of interesting. But, you know, I'm not as active on, you know, Twitter as I used to be. I'm not putting out a little content on TikTok and those kinds of things.
No dances? I was looking for the dimbo dance on TikTok.
You don't have an OnlyFans account like Adam and his knuckles. Yeah.
Only hands. Yeah.
Only hands. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, not so much, not so much. But yeah, a, a lot of it is more, you know, the, the traditional media. And then honestly, I mean, I still right now, um, I mean, I haven't been doing a ton of speaking. So, but what I have been doing is working on curriculum for what I'm teaching right now. I'm doing, uh, you know, middle school computer science and we at our district, uh, my school, we put our stake in the ground and said, we're going to do a heavy, heavy emphasis on AI. And AI is such a rich and open, uh, arena right now where there's so much stuff coming out about it. And we're sort of just like breaking ground. I feel like AI is sort of where VR was about five years ago, where, you know, it, it's sort of this up and coming, like there's this ground swell right now. So I've been spending a lot of time in, in that world.
You look at investment dollars and see like, where's the world going nationally? And a lot of money's been invested in robotics, then 10 years later, robotics enter into the classroom with Sphero's and stuff. And now all the, all the money's being invested in AI. So yeah, in 10 years or five years, there'll be a lot of AI. What was it? Did, did we see, maybe we were all in the same text chain where somebody said there was like, it's not, uh, Alexa, but it's like some sort of version of that for the classroom now that's coming out, the smart.
Merlin.
Merlin. Yeah, that's like, no, we don't know them, nor are they associated or a sponsor of this company or this podcast, but, but you know.
Would like to be.
Unless they'd like to be, in this case, I don't know. What do you think about all that though? I mean, is that, I mean, to me, I, I love the idea of a smart classroom in the sense of like, I don't have to take attendance anymore. The classroom knows who's in the room. And, um, I don't need to ask the low level questions. You could just ask, although I guess, I know with middle school kids, they would probably really figure out a way to mess with that thing. If you could ask it any question you wanted, you know, I can only imagine what, what'll come out of it.
So to, to me, like, so wait, just to be clear, Merlin is not a sponsor of this program?
It is not at all. So feel free, go, go.
Okay. It, that, that's more of a digital assistant and more of a parlor trick than anything else. I wouldn't consider that AI. Um, you know, to, to me, AI is more along the lines of, you know, can, can we take the formative assessments that students are doing? And actually within the first month of class, be able to make, uh, realistic predictions about how they're going to finish their class and who's going to need remediation in month three during month, uh, uh, week three. You know what I mean? To be able to sort of project that stuff out and to be able to work with complex data sets. To be able to use, uh, you know, put a camera in the classroom and be able to assess how, whether students are engaged and whether they're actually with you or whether they're lost, whether you're confused and at what point simply by, uh, gesture and facial expression and those kinds of things. To me, you know, there, there's a lot of really fascinating applications of it that we haven't even started touching yet. And yes, I know there's ethics issues and all, and all the rest. It's totally illegal to do that kind of stuff in Illinois. Anyway, I'm not doing those things, just to be a hundred percent clear.
He's on the record. You heard it here first, folks.
Well, like, but, but the fact is, you know, I just bought, uh, you know, enough a Google AIY kits. So you, so these are basically Raspberry Pi zeros with a, a camera, a button, a speaker, just very, very simple little kit. I, I bought enough to go one to one from sixth through eighth grade for my students. And we are going to be starting off the year with those kits, doing actual former AI models and then using them throughout the year where they're going to have the autonomy to actually add AI magic around the school. So for example, putting one outside of the computer science classroom that will recognize the person who is going in either by gesture or by face and play their theme music as they walk into the room. You know what I mean? They'll actually count the number of people going into the bathroom by period to start to identify either, not necessarily when there's high traffic times, but maybe when there's periods that, um, maybe the classes aren't quite as engaging. You know what I mean? Where maybe there's something going on that would cause an unusual increase in the amount of traffic, that kind of things. You know, but like, but to try and come up with things that they might want to try and measure and assess in, uh, really creative and novel ways. That's what we want to be pushing our students to.
You know, there's so much potential in there. Uh, but like you said, there, there are some ethical questions that have to be determined because, you know, we've all heard the, whether true or not true, you know, they determine how many prisons to build based on third grade, uh, reading scores or test scores. I don't know if that's true or not, but you know, we all heard that. But, but with that, with the ability to predict, we should be able to do more right now. I mean, right now on my Netflix, it's telling me what I should watch based on my, my trends. Netflix is using that information to determine which shows to green light based on their viewership, their age and their demographics. So you can't tell me today, we should not be able to take some of our state testing data and automatically determine what lesson would work best with little Steve and it was he's, as he's in class, telling the teacher, hey, here's a prescribed curriculum. Here's prescribed lesson that he, you want to get Steve's attention every day that he's in class. That's totally different than Adam, because Adam needs something totally different and, and, and Carl needs something different. We could do that today, but we're not. And I get it. I get it. Cause there's a lot of questions and ethical things. And if a company gets involved, then it becomes a thing. But I mean, to me, that's where I think we're missing a lot in education. We have these tools outside that can really help us grow and learn, but we don't really use them in the space where we need it the most.
I think you're, you're hitting the nail right on the head in terms of theirs. We are collecting immense amounts of data and we are not, uh, use, putting that data into use in a way that would actually make a difference, you know, on a daily basis. That all of that state, uh, the, the standardized test data is too way too removed and too time delayed for a teacher to make effective use of it on a daily basis. Um, you know, the, in theory, it, it could be fantastic. It's just, it's too burdensome as it is right now. But the idea that you're talking about, I'm, that's exactly it. You know, it's just, there, there's so many different things, you know, the, the, the formative data that a teacher collects on a daily basis, for the most part, isn't being tied into the big state standardized data. Those, those data sets rarely, if ever actually intersect and they need to, you know?
First state, the only state that I've heard that's done it so far, and this was just as a few months ago, is South Carolina has figured out a way, but they had to partner with a third party nonprofit. Days basically to take all the aggregate, the formative assessment data, they're even taking SEL data. And then they're, they're basically painting a picture, but they had it because of the data privacy stuff, they've had to like blind it. So where they can't see like it's student X, but the district knows who that is based on some sort of little primer code. Um, but they're able to see like trends and data of all the, of everything. And that's, I think they're the first to start it, but I think it's going to take, and they have like, they've hired data scientists. I mean, they put money where their mouth is on it. Whereas the rest of the states, I think they're just like, wow, well, that's great that they're doing that. We have our state, our $800 million, you know, Pearson's testing contract that we have to deal with. So.
So Steve, this is a question that we always ask all of our guests, but I'm going to switch it up a little bit. I normally ask people, how do they keep, uh, or how do they stay undisrupted? But you are a disruptor. So what is something that you think moving forward, going forward to different? There you go, Carl, that we need to disrupt in K-12 education? So we can get to where we want to be, where we know we should be. What is something that we need to disrupt?
I think that we are far too lenient with teachers in general about pushing them to make change. You know, there are a lot of times where we, especially, I mean, you can see this in this post COVID era where we know there's certain instruction that is more effective or less effective and so on. But we kind of soft sell it. Maybe we'll introduce it in PD, but we don't necessarily hold their feet to the fire and say, you have to make change. And, you know, it's, it's a simple, you know, matter of inertia. Even if people recognize it's the right thing to do, it's just so easy to say, well, I'll do that for my next unit. I'll do that for the next trimester. I'll do that next year. I'll try and work on that over the summer and maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't. And then all of a sudden, well, another year is gone by. I, I think that we are being far too gentle with teachers. Now I say that, and I also know that some teachers are going to come at me with a pitchfork, even possibly my own neighbors here at the school because.
Teach42 on Twitter, everybody. So you heard that. Teach 42 on Twitter, everybody. So you heard that. Yeah.
And, and, and I get that, like, it's not easy and nobody likes it and, and everybody's got enough on their plates as it is. But what I have found here, I'll, I'll just give you an example from a, a, a friend of mine. They were talking about, they were moving from PCs to Macs. And so it was going to be somewhat of a big switch. So every teacher already had a PC. They gave them a Mac and said, here, you've got both, you got a full year to make the transition. At the end of the year, we're going to take away the PC and all you're left with is the Mac. How many of those people do you think even cracked open that Mac until the day before they were taking away the PC at best? That's it. That's exactly it. And i- 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 it's, we're trying to be nice. We're trying to be the good guys. We're trying to soft sell things and just appeal to people's better nature. And I'm sorry, but there are times where we just got to rip the bandit off and say, we're going to go in a different way. And it's not because we don't empathize for you. It's not be, you know, yes, they need resources. Yes, they need time to do it. But what they really need is, uh, there are times where we have to use less carrots and more sticks.
I totally feel you on that because it definitely goes back to who do we serve at? It's the kids. And if, and that whole time that you're coddling and going through there, the kids are suffering. The kids are, you're saying, okay, we, we know this is the right thing to do for kids today, but you're not ready to do it. So we're going to give you a year to do it. You know, I hear that a lot with the S E L inequity work, you know? Oh, people are going to be upset if we start talking about this. Well, what about the kids that are dealing with it every day? Let's, let's just wait. You, this is push off. Let's just push it off. You know, you can't do that. I mean, you gotta do what's best for your kids.
I really thought the pandemic was going to be the thing that was like, okay, let's disrupt this break. Let's just break the system and then rebuild it from scratch. And then that quick rush to get back to where everything was beforehand. I, when I saw that happening, I was like, ah, there was an opportunity lost there, but I'm with you. I, I do think we need to push them. Um, yes. And he is at teach 42 on Twitter. He just wanted to send him, uh, and I, I appreciate the honesty because I think, uh, we're really quick in any business, but especially in education to give excuses. And I think teacher capacity was a real problem. I think we're coming kind of out of that window now. And I think maybe we should continue to push forward and, and quit kind of leaving that as a, as saying like, well, you know, we're still struggling here. I was like, we, we've had this for a couple of years now. I think we know what the future is going forward somewhat. But, um, thank you for joining us, uh, as always on the podcast, Steve. Always great chatting with you. Um, any great, where, what, what's some great exciting thing you're doing next? Anything fun that you want to share with the audience?
I- i- in all seriousness, right now, it's, it's just getting back to teaching, you know, I've been spent all summer, you know, power washing Chromebooks and, you know, upgrading phone systems and, you know, wiring up new buildings and this and that. And I just, I can't wait until this building fills up with teachers and students again. I, I'm a real simple caveman right now, and I love the fact that I'm like literally right back to where I be, I'm full circle, right back to where I began.
I don't know how many nicknames we've made for Steve just on this podcast, but Ed Tech Caveman, I am but a simple caveman, Ed Tech Tech Director. Uh, that is awesome. Well, thank you for joining us. And again, for our listeners out there, be sure to subscribe and give us a review. We'd appreciate it. We might even give you a shout out on a future show. This has been the Undisrupted Podcast brought to you by Future Ready Schools. He's Adam and you can follow him at AskAdam3.
And he's Carl and you can follow him at Mr. Hooker. And remember, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, we are better together.
We are better.
Undisrupted.